This meeting is being recorded.
Just a second here, okay. So we'd like to call the City of Kenmore Planning Commission meeting for April 19th to order. And we all have the agenda on the website. So first is public comments, so we'd like to invite anyone who is here to identify themselves so that Rita can promote you and it's three minutes and there is a time limit. So please identify yourself and Rita will take care of it.
We have Elizabeth Mooney, if you give me one second, let me get my timer going here.
And Elizabeth, you're muted.
Okay, Ms. Mooney, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you very much, Planning Commission, and I'm just very pleased to see you. I, I do want to just say a couple of things. It's nice to give you attention because I know our city council gets so much attention. Our nonprofit PERC has been working on the have clean air in our community. And so I just want you to know that on Earth Day, we're going to be sending out some flyers over at the Kenmore Square about clean air and how we can comment. And I'd love to have you promote that knowledge that Puget Sound Clean Air Agency is receiving comments until May 2nd about the asphalt draft permit. Also, I know that it'd be great to get back in person. And what I would suggest is that maybe we can come around to get more people coming to your planning commission by meeting up at our local businesses. So there are a lot of great opportunities. I just happen to be with my chihuahua at an undisclosed spot right now, but you might be able to tell where. And I am having a really great time. You know, I've just won some swag. I'm going to have some swag from PERC pretty soon to promote clean air in all seriousness. The, the plant is part of our city and it, in my opinion, shouldn't be heavy industry there. And I know back when I was on the shoreline with the Planning Commission, Mike, I was there trying to explain what our shoreline should look like and have habitat restoration. The, the, the agencies that are trying to help us, they just don't have enough people to do all the jobs that us citizens need to do. So with the Planning Commission, I just want to promote something that Tracy Bonaginski had said way back when she first was part of the Planning Commission, which is we want to restore our Lake Point. And whether that means it's all a park or primarily a park for citizens. I mean, we had Gasworks Park was mentioned back when I was in the Shoreline Citizens Committee as part of the Planning Commission. And if we go for what's positive out there and habitat and salmon restoration and then bring in the small businesses that are making our life fun with our dogs, right Rex? And beer, I mean, Kenmore has become a very happy beer brewing society. I mean, I know at Love Notes, the last Kenmore, For the Love of Kenmore, it was all about beer, that was the biggest thing. And yeah, coffee is good too and not drinking too much alcohol. I mean, we could get the YMCA at the, at the edge of our municipal park at Lake Point. We could bring in Seattle Aquarium to let us know about our efforts as nonprofits with Lake Forest Parks.
Ms. Mooney, Ms. Mooney, thank you, that's your time, thank you.
All right, bye.
Bye bye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming to our meeting. And Derek, I know that she raised the, the stein to you there. You're very familiar with that part of our community. All right, Rita, do we have anyone else? Please identify yourself so she can promote you to a panelist and let us know what you have on your mind.
I see no more hands raised at this time.
Okay, since we have no one else that wants to speak, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We're going to take these one at a time, March 15th, Planning Commission meetings. Are there any comments or amendments? Seeing none, if there's no objections, they'll stand approved. So April 5th, 2022, Planning Commission meeting minutes, is there any comments or amendments? Seeing none, hearing none, unless there's an objection, they stand approved, April 5th, Planning Commission meetings approved, minutes. All right. Well, guess who's going to want to talk to us tonight? So we were talking just before the meeting, just very briefly, and Lori instructed us that these items will be reviewed tonight and what we do tonight will go to, the version will go to public hearing. So please keep that in mind, of course, it's not a final version, it's after we listen to our citizens in Kenmore before we make any final decisions. So those who of you who are listening to us, please understand that we are dedicated to hearing your feedback and taking it in consideration before we make a final vote or and/or make amendments to what you will hear tonight and what you've heard at prior meetings. So Lori, it's all for you.
All right, so well, thank you for the introduction and good evening to all of you, dedicated Planning Commissioners. So tonight we have basically two business agenda items. The first is to continue with the missing middle housing amendments, and there are several sort of subheadings under that. And then the second thing is review of the zoning map, the revised zoning map. So with completion, if we get to completion of these two items tonight, then as Chair Thompson mentioned, we will have a full package of preliminary recommendations for the May 17th public hearing. And I'll talk more after we've gone through the agenda items about the public hearing. So to begin, we have prepared revised zoning code amendments addressing two topics. You had raised these issues at your last meeting. And so I'm just going to briefly touch on them and, and obviously take your questions and comments. The first one is revised definition language for duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. And this was to address a concern raised that could duplexes and triplexes be divided as ownership housing through the condominium regulations. So we have noted that duplexes and triplexes could in fact be condominiums. Townhomes are still ownership housing and they're a different form and type of housing. We had the city attorney and Development Services Department look at the definitions to make sure we weren't stepping on any regulatory toes. The state controls how condominiums are and property are divided. So any comments or questions about these amendments?
Seeing none, let's move on.
All right. And then the second set of revised standards has to do with landscaping. And this was the case where a driveway could be within three feet of a side property line if it was taking residents to the back of the lot or parking. And we had specified that there should be landscaping, but there was no standard. So the commission asked that we actually come up with a standard and suggested we look at the other commercial and multifamily standards in the zoning code. We did that and attachment two describes the existing types of landscaping screens and they didn't really fit in a three-foot residential planting area. So we revised the standard, we're focusing more on shrubs than on trees. It doesn't mean you couldn't put a tree there, but shrubs are probably going to fit a little bit better if you don't want to overhang your neighbor's property. And then the other thing is that existing standards require that you have a formal landscape architect professional prepare the plan and then that you submit a financial guarantee to ensure maintenance for a period of years. We have revised those standards to say that the plan, and we're doing this to save development costs, the plan could be prepared as part of the site plan and would be reviewed as part of the site plan by Development Services. And the code already has a maintenance requirement so that if the plantings die, you have to replace them. So are there any questions about that change?
Tracy.
Can you, Lori, describe a little bit more about what the maintenance requirement is and, and what sort of, if there's any kind of enforcement teeth to it? Like, so it seems to be the sort of thing that sometimes people might just want to not do at all.
Uh huh.
You know what I mean? And I was just wondering about that aspect.
Yeah, so let me actually grab the code and I'm going to tell you exactly what it says. And in terms of enforcement, as with any zoning code standard, if there, we usually rely on complaints. So for example, if the neighbor were to call and say, you know, they're not maintaining their plants and they're all dying, that would be how we would know to enforce. So it says, "All landscaping shall be maintained for the life of the project." This is a maintenance standard. "All landscaping materials shall be pruned and trimmed as necessary to maintain a healthy growing condition or to prevent primary limb failure." In this case, it's focused more towards trees. With the exception of dead, diseased, or damaged trees specifically retained to provide wildlife habitat, other dead, diseased, damaged, or stolen planting shall be replaced within three months or during the next planting season if the loss does not occur in a planting season. And landscape areas shall be kept free of trash. So those are the maintenance standards. And again, the way we would typically enforce would be if there was a complaint, it could be a complaint from the neighbor. Sometimes if it's really egregious and if there's a staff person passing by, who knows there's supposed to be a planting strip there, they can report to the code enforcement officer about the need to look into the maintenance. So in the case of financial guarantees, I think it's a requirement, it may be for a year. And then there's an inspection after a year to make sure that the plantings are established. But then there's, there is nothing that occurs after that, we're back to the regular maintenance standards.
As a follow-up, what, is there a, if somebody did complain and the planting was investigated and it was found that it wasn't being maintained properly, is there a fine or just a kind of a issuance of like, please take care of this better, what, what happens after that?
Yeah, so it would become a code enforcement action. And usually the first step is to call the person and say, sort of, did you know that you're not meeting the requirements and please address this? And then there are sort of sequential steps that occur after that. So, and they get more and more rigorous so that it could progress to fines in the worst case scenario. Usually it doesn't get that far. Usually the person, once they get a notice of violation or other official notification from the city that they either have to do it or they're going to get a fine and take care of it.
And that's all in the code is what you're saying.
Right, correct. Well, then the notice of violation process isn't specified in the zoning code. I think that may be in another section of the municipal code, but yes, it describes how enforcement happens.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tracy.
So I'm thinking now about if we were in like a plat situation and a developer, you know, set up, I'm just going to make up some numbers for a hypothetical, like there were 10 units that required this planting strip. Could the developer just simply not do it and pass that responsibility off to the person who bought the property?
No, subdivisions, subdivisions are handled differently. Required improvements for a subdivision have to be installed and inspected before the lots are sold, for example.
Okay.
So in, in that case, the, the planting, I guess it would sort of depend on where, where it was occurring. If they were dividing the lots and putting in the driveways, then probably they would have to install the plantings as part of the subdivision. If they were just dividing the lots and then selling it to a builder who was going to decide where the driveway would go, then it probably would follow the building permit and, and would be addressed that way.
Great. So I have one more question, but I will, if anyone else has any questions about this particular thing, I'm happy to be. Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
My last question is about what, what are the requirements, if any, about native versus non-native plants?
There, there aren't. There, there aren't requirements.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that something that's open for discussion now or?
I, I think it's probably open for discussion. You'll want to think about whether native shrubs are, are what you would want in that landscaping strip? I would say.
Don't we require every home to have a Dahlia planted somewhere in the garden? It's the, it's the Kenmore flower.
Right, the Kenmore flower.
Well, how about hops? That in the backyard?
About 26 of them, yes.
Well, the, the reason I bring it up is because there has been a lot of damage that's been done to our ecosystems by bringing in non-native plants. And I mean, in some ways, the plants are out of the bag at this point. However, it costs a lot of money to remove those, these invasive plants to create native habitat and, you know, if they're planted anywhere, they can travel. You know, they, they can't travel on their own, but birds can eat their seeds, birds travel to different places, the seeds get dispersed that way on the wind and stuff like that. So just things like, yeah, it just is a kind of an ongoing concern, I think, for our native ecosystems.
I think what, if I may interpret slightly, should there not be a list of invasive species that goes with the, wherever this ordinance is, that these species are not allowed to be part of the landscape permit?
So the state has a, a list of noxious weeds and they identify invasive species that, that should not be used. I think the notion of specifying native plantings, again, I'm thinking of shrubs in particular and, and the shrubs that I know, and certainly I don't know all the native shrubs, but snowberry and maybe one of the escaping me, I guess, salal is evergreen, but it's very low and doesn't, I mean, it takes a long time to get tall enough to be an effective screen. So, so I'm, I'm more interested in whether there are actually native shrubs that would accomplish the goal of screening the driveway from the neighboring property. And, and that's where my only issue would be, if, if we are confident that there are native shrubs that can do that.
Yeah, that's, I, I, that's a fair point. And I don't, I don't think that our native shrubs provide that same kind of coverage that we are, have become accustomed to in our concrete development, our, our own human habitats. That doesn't mean they don't have value, I think they, they very much do, but I, I do understand what you're saying. I, I think that there, for me, there's a difference between a non-native plant species and a, a non-native that is invasive. So like, I would be incredibly disturbed if I felt like the city of Kenmore was allowing people to plant Himalayan blackberry next to their driveway.
Oh, absolutely not.
Like, things like that, like that, that, that are incredibly destructive to our ecosystems. And there, and there are some, and, and there are plants like that, that, that are still sold in nurseries, like English ivy. English ivy is another one that's incredibly invasive and just is destroying our native habitat. So I, I, I do feel like it would be, I would like to see us kind of take that up and, and think about it when we're, you know, rather than just willy-nilly letting people plant whatever they want.
Perhaps it would be useful when, after the public hearing, when you come back to talk about things, I'm happy to provide the list of noxious weeds that are not permitted in the city and, and that's the state list. And I think, I know for sure Himalayan blackberry is on it, I think English ivy is probably also on it as well.
I don't think that anybody is planting Himalayan blackberry anymore, that's a pretty extreme example.
We hope not.
But there still are other plants, I think, that people like holly, for example, I think probably people still plant holly and that's also another really destructive one. So I, I do, yeah, I feel like it's worth a conversation. And if we can address it at this level, I think that could be a very positive thing.
So would you agree to have Lori come back after the hearing and then with the list and then we can address it at that time?
Yeah, that would be fine with me.
Okay, Nathan?
So I don't know how many of you know, but last summer, I, I spent the summer working with the city in their environmental services department, maintaining a lot of the surface water, water facilities we have within the city. And about 90% of my job was removing those kinds of invasive plants, whether it was Himalayan blackberry or knotweed or tansy ragwort or purple loose strife, that's, that was most of my job was removing those from the, the, the surface water facilities. So I, I am definitely on board for not letting those there, although I think to address Lori's point, there, there's a list of these plants that are not allowed to be planted. And I think King County also doubles down on this as well, I may be mistaken. But they're, they're not allowed to be planted. And I think we can go over those and if maybe there's, we want to reemphasize that as a city as well, I don't know what kind of city legislation we have in place when it comes to that. But I, I know what you mean and I don't, definitely don't want that kind of stuff allowed in, I mean, I know it's not allowed, but appearing to be allowed.
Well, and while, you know, if, if we're still selling them in nurseries, then people are going to, people don't, some people don't know, they will go to a nursery and they will just plant whatever. So I think anything we can do to provide more education and be more clear in our own code would be a positive thing.
All right, any further comment on that issue? Okay, hearing none, Lori, you want to move on?
Sure. So the next set of amendments from what you saw last time is in your attachment three, and it was a whole set of miscellaneous code sections, mostly addressing the fact that with our new definitions, we eliminated the term apartment, it's no longer a defined term. So in many cases, it just now says multiple family, in other cases, it says multiple family, but excluding duplexes or triplexes. So if you had specific questions about any of those, I'm happy to review them with you. And then at the very end of, of that list is an amendment to chapter 1830, which is a miscellaneous standard that talks about how lot width is measured. That's designed for subdivisions. And I wanted to make it clear that for duplexes and triplexes, the measurement method goes back to the zoning code standard that talks about lot width and depth, where we explain how that is done.
Are there any questions right now before we move on to either the next topic or starting looking at the actual code? Seeing none, go ahead, Lori.
Okay. And so I'm assuming then that you did not, am I misunderstanding, but are those miscellaneous code sections okay to move forward to hearing or did you want me to go through them?
Well, I don't think we need to necessarily go through them, that means you have to explain it, but I'll go through, is there any comments on attachment one? And this is, is that correct? We're going to start with attachment one, right?
Those are the standards that I just described, the definitions and the landscaping.
All right.
And then attachment three is the next set of code changes.
Okay, Nathan?
So thinking about, back to what we were just discussing about vegetation, would it be possible to maybe insert a little comment saying not to include vegetation that's listed as invasive based on the Washington State, whatever list it's called, maybe just some little insert there? And that may be able to hit that base that we?
I, I'm happy to do that. And I think the other thing I'd like to do is to go through the landscaping chapter as a whole and make sure we're not overlapping. Even if we're overlapping, I could add a phrase that refers back to that section that talks about noxious plants. If, if the commission would like me to add that phrase, I'm happy to do it.
Is there any objection to Nathan's suggestion? Hearing none, it's going to happen, thank you. Any further comments on attachment one? If not, without objection, we will finalize that for public hearing. So now we're going to go to attachment two.
Attachment two are existing standards from the landscaping chapter, so that was just for reference.
Okay, that's changing the, that's technical changes, correct Lori?
No, attachment two is just the existing landscaping standards in the code. I wanted you to be able to review those as you were thinking about what we were doing with.
Oh, you're right. And also that you changed it to multifamily, you made some.
That's attachment three, correct.
Well, I'm telling you, I'm having a problem here, okay? Let me, I show attachment two as zoning code amendments needed for removal of apartment definition.
Oh, as do I. Really?
Yes.
Well, I don't even know what to suggest there, something has gone bad. Um, we're talking about the same thing, that's all we care about. The zoning code amendments to address multi-fam, multiple family dwellings in place of the word apartment. And then that one standard about measuring lot width.
Can that?
Whether it was attachment two or attachments three.
Okay, that's, that's fine. So the lot width, I'll get you Nathan, the lot width part on this attachment is, I just want to make sure we're looking at what, where, which.
Very last page.
Very last page, thank you very much. That means we're scrolled down a long ways.
Right, page seven, it should say page seven at the bottom.
Then we're, I'm not looking, I'm at 1880, 080. Is that correct?
No, it's two more after that, it's 183110, it's after 18100.
Oh, 183110, okay. I just want to make sure everyone knows what the other item that needs to be looked at. Okay, Nathan, go ahead, I'm sorry to.
Oh, I think I was jumping ahead to the beginning of attachment two, so if.
Go ahead.
I, I don't, if there's any other comments on page seven of attachment to the 183110, I don't want to interrupt anybody there.
Oh, so you mean her attachment two versus our attachment two?
You know what, it, it's my mistake. I'm following off the memo where I had inverted the two attachments. So you're absolutely correct that attachment two is zoning code amendments needed for removal and it's attachment three is in fact the existing code section on landscape screen. So I apologize, that's totally my fault.
That's fine, it's no problem. So Nathan, you want to talk about the next attachment, correct? On the, on the agenda for the public, correct? Okay.
Yeah, the one. Yes.
Great, great. So is there any comments on, on the public site on attachment two? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move these to public hearing. So now Lori, we're going to go to, on the website is attachment three, which is existing landscaping screens. And Nathan, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was referring. I'm sorry, I was referring to, um, goodness, where am I? Um, I was looking at, what is that? Eighteen twenty four zero four zero?
Okay, that's attachment two.
Okay.
Eighteen twenty four. Eighteen twenty one zero four zero.
Um, eighteen twenty four zero four zero zoning standards.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I had a question about, um, that table, that chart on, what is that? Page three? In the middle row, minimum density. It says eighteen for townhouse only development. And then it says eighteen through thirty six townhouse slash combination, other multiple family uh, development. And then it says thirty six for multiple family development other than townhouse. And I was a little confused by what that meant. If it's the minimum density, um, what, what does the eighteen through thirty six mean in that?
Um.
Units per acre?
Right, that, it is dwelling units per acre. You can do townhouse. Combination development. Okay, but why does it have two? Oh, I see. Uh, minimum density can be between eighteen and thirty six acres if you have a townhouse in a combination development, which means it's a townhouse plus some other commercial use. This is in the, uh, downtown residential zone. So this is one of the city's downtown zones. Um, and then thirty six and beyond is multiple family development other than townhouses. So that would be apartments.
That was my confusion. I was just wondering why there wasn't just the eighteen for the townhouse and the thirty six for the family development.
Yeah.
I, I guess just the way it was worded, I didn't realize that it was, um, combination of the two.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. Actually, I, that's existing code language, but I assume that they're giving uh, a span somehow that eighteen is townhouse only. You can go eighteen to thirty six if it's a combination and over thirty six if it's an apartment.
Okay, thank you.
So are there any further comments on attachment two? So go ahead, Nathan.
Uh, eighteen fifteen zero four zero. I believe that's new. That's number two, that line there. Uh, providing in the R six zone close to transit. Is that referencing our quarter mile?
Um, right.
Uh huh. Um, and is that, um, referenced or explained in depth somewhere else that this is connected to? Um, or is this kind of away from the definition of R, R six and?
Yeah, it's, it's away from the definition of R six. It's at the very beginning of the zoning code, which talks about what the different zones are for. So this is for the residential zones and it's just giving a brief description of what the various residential zones are.
Uh, I, I guess when I was reading it, just the close to, I wasn't quite sure if that was supposed to refer to our quarter mile um, length that we made. Would it, Lori, would it be more descriptive to maybe have parentheses right after close to and say within a quarter mile of?
We can just change it to within a quarter mile of it. This is a, a sort of a general introductory section. So I didn't go into all the details, but we certainly can put that detail in there if you would prefer that.
It may help to clear up some confusion if it's just the same standard listed throughout.
Okay.
Is there any objection to that?
Okay.
Okay, so that's all right. Since there's no objection. Are you all done, Nathan? Okay, so with those amendments, unless there's an objection, we will move attachment two to public hearing, then with those amend, as amended. All right. Are you good with that, Lori? Okay, so now if I'm correct, we are now on the listed, um, attachment three, which is landscaping screens. Um, is there, um?
And again, those are existing standards that were just provided for reference.
So there's no amendments for us to work. Tracy?
I, I just, I just have a comment since it's come back up again. It, 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 my thoughts are in, still in process about this. So this is me thinking out loud, but I understand that we have maybe traditionally thought about these plantings between properties as a, a, a screen, but I'm wondering if it might, uh, if we could think differently about them. Um, I know I've read a lot about how if we could just convert like swats, even parts of some of our suburban and, you know, urban yards to native plantings, that that could actually do a great deal for our native insects and native birds, creating a little bit more habitat. So maybe if these plantings between our, our built homes aren't screens so much as like providing more habitat for other creatures, that could also be a really, um, wonderful purpose for them. It does like, it, it does change how we're thinking about them a bit, I think. Not so much as like screens so that we can't see each other, um, but as plants that provide a different purpose. So that, that's the only, I, it's just a comment. I'm not, I don't have, I mean, yeah, just a comment.
How, how would we do something like that, Lori, if we wanted to do that?
Well, I think if that's your interest, you would change the way it's phrased. So you would say you can have a driveway within three feet of the property line if you commit your three foot, the three foot lands. You commit a three foot landscaping strip uh, for, uh, planting of native, uh, shrubs and understory plants, something like that. Uh, and that would achieve that outcome that is, as we've previously discussed, not necessarily achieving the screening component, which is what the landscaping was originally intended for. So the planning commission to, can decide what you want that landscape strip to be used for. Do you want it for habitat or do you want it for screening?
Is there interest in, um, not that we have to make amendments tonight, but is there other individuals that are also interested in potentially making amendments toward Tracy's, um, concept?
Yeah, I, I'm.
Mary?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm in support of that. I'm also just thinking, Lori, when we're thinking about the use of landscaping um, and habitat as Tracy was describing, is there anything that we need to consider or then connect back to the county's climate action plan?
I, I missed the last part of your comment.
Oh, is there any, um, is there anything that we need to consider when we're talking about landscaping and as it comes to habitat versus screening that we would need to connect back to the county's climate change action plan? Just thinking about, um, you know, production of greenhouse emissions and, and just the protection of the forests and, and other types of, uh, you know, the environment aspects. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to see if there's anything that we need to connect in this conversation with that.
I, I don't think that this would be the place to connect it to the climate action plan. I certainly think it has a potential impact. But we'll be taking up at the end of this year, a whole climate action element. And that may be the appropriate place to consider policies about native vegetation, et cetera, based on the climate action plan that the city council is targeted to approve. Uh, maybe even approved, uh, last night. I can't remember which agenda that is on, but that climate action plan, Kenmore's climate action plan will be the foundation for a brand new element in our comprehensive plan that talks about policies and approaches to address the climate change.
Dwight, I think you're muted.
I was muted. So, uh, is there, back to Tracy's suggestion of something to look at? Are there, um, individuals on the planning commission that are supportive of, uh, looking at that? Okay, so as for, or so what I might suggest is could we just put, um, like an introductory, the commission is considering type of paragraph on this attachment to, to, um, alert the public that we are considering this as an alternative and for that it may be amended in such a way after the public hearing based upon public feedback. Can we do that, Lori?
Um, yeah, we can do that. I, I, what I'm thinking is when I enter, so what I'll do is insert these new amendments into uh, the full set of amendments, but I will add language highlighted probably in gray because I think that will come through most clearly. That says the planet, we did this, um, do you remember we had notes with the vision statement? It'll be similar to that. And so I'll make a note that the planning commission is considering whether the, this three foot area should be considered for planting for habitat or planting for screening. And we'll just leave that in there through the public hearing. And then I'll bring back that list of prohibited plants. And then you all can decide which approach you want to take.
Is there any objection to that? Now, go ahead, Mike.
Not an objection, but just a clarification. Uh, are we looking at one being, this being an option? Or we're saying we only have one or the other?
I, I was assuming that you were gonna choose one or the other unless we can identify some screening native plants. That was where my concern came from.
I kind of thought that what was possibly the suggestion was that there would be options provided to, um, whomever it is that's doing this. Um, so that they could go either way, or they could do a combination of such as Tracy, was that what your thought was?
Well, I was very much in process and just talking out loud, but I, it seems to me that this is the sort of thing we would have to talk further about. Exactly, to, to see what our recommendation would be one way or the other.
And my concern is I, I just wanted the public to know that we're considering this so that if they wanted to comment about it, they'd have the opportunity in gray, Lori, to, to understand that this is a topic that if they want to weigh in on, it's time to weigh in on it. So, Mike, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, uh, my preference would be to provide people with an option uh, to go either way, not to be exclusive of one or the other. But I agree, there needs to be some more discussion and discovery on this before we would actually make it into a kind of code amendment.
Okay, so we're on, um, uh, attachment three, if there's no further amendments. Oh, Nathan. You knew where I was going on this, didn't you?
Yes, well, for this one, I, Lori, do you think this would be a, uh, an appropriate place to maybe insert something about noxious weeds, um, in these landscaping standards?
So attachment three is language that's related to commercial and multifamily development standards. So these are not sections that we would anticipate changing. Um, I certainly am happy to go back through the landscaping chapter and see where the prohibition on noxious weeds appears. It's possible that it's in our critical areas regulations. Um, but I am not certain, so I will look for that. But I would suggest that we not start amending code sections, uh, that are not part of this package. Um, and, and believe me, I have had a number of staff say, could you fix this sections like no? This is all supposed to hang together. This is like all about missing middle housing. So I would recommend against it. Um, and I, again, this information was provided just to show you that those commercial and multifamily screens don't really fit with our three foot landscape strip because they're really focused on trees.
Thank you for that clarification.
Uh huh.
Now, are there any, is there anyone else that would like more clarification? Hearing none, then as amended, attachment three will go to public hearing unless there's an objection. Hearing none, so ordered. So now we're to attachment four A.
Right. And, and before we get to four, uh, I wonder if I might just jump in here because there is a piece of additional information that you had requested related directly. Attachment four is related to the, the information you asked about, about discriminatory actions in land use. Um, the remaining piece of the missing middle housing regulations has to do with that whole concept of wings. I can remember we raised this at the last meeting. And then you asked me to go back to Opticos and say, why, why would we do this? And so I talked with Tony Perez at Opticos. I included his, an excerpt from his note back to me and said, basically the idea of wings comes up when you have a, um, a lot that the proposed duplex or triplex doesn't extend clear to the setbacks. It doesn't exceed lot coverage, but they want to make a bigger structure. And so rather than make the main body of the house wider and deeper, uh, they make provisions for these little bump outs that have specified setbacks from walls and, and certain lots, uh, are, are lot, certain structure widths and depths and articulation, how many you can have on a facade and that kind of thing. So it's a way to allow more development in a way that's more design friendly. The ultimate outcome is its structure is bigger than the standards we've set out to date. And the standards we've set out to date, don't say you can't do an articulated building. They just say if you draw a box around the building, um, it has to be no wider than this and no deeper than this. So I, I'm bringing it, that information back to you along with a couple of code sections. You had asked that I provide some examples. Uh, so this is a twenty twenty one code that Opticos worked on. And it shows again, the main body and how the widths and depths are specified. Uh, and then how the wings are handled. Uh, so there's both a table with an example of a, um, site plan. And then on the next, uh, uh, page, there's an example that shows an elevation of how the wings would extend from the main, uh, building. Again, in these examples, the main building is shown as a square, which doesn't, it doesn't have to be a square. It just meets, it can't be wider than this and deeper than this. It could have lots of bump outs. It could, um. So with that information, uh, the question is, does the planning commission want me to pursue additional standards that would allow for wings on lots that could accommodate them? Or do we want to stick with the current width and depth plan for now? Um, see how that goes. And then if it, it's an ongoing issue, then we can revisit the question of wings.
So just to be clear, what we're looking at, so there's no question for the public or for us, is we're going back to your memo. Um, essentially somewhere where it has to do with articulated building size through main body and wing approach.
Right.
And those pictures and discussion that, uh, take up the next couple of pages there.
Hmm.
So that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
And the question that you want us to answer is, do you want us, do, do we want you to, uh, this type of, of, um, way of doing business?
Right. Do you want me to write in an allowance for wings? Uh, that would extend from the main width and depth requirements?
When you say write in, do you mean that you would write something into
the code?
Stuff that's going into the, the act, uh, some part of a code that will actually go to public hearing?
Yes, correct. And so then if that is the case, uh, so there, uh, if the planning commission finishes tonight, I would recommend that you cancel the May third meeting. If you want to talk about wings and have that, those standards for review, that is what we would do at the May third, uh, planning commission meeting. And then incorporate that into the public. And then incorporate that into the public hearing.
Comments, please? I see people's minds whirling about. Okay, Mario, you got the first whirl.
Well, just that as my mind is swirling, that's a good, good way of describing it. I'm just thinking, um. To be able to kind of to make a decision right now, what is the demand for wings? What is the level for developments that are trying to make these kinds of decisions? So like, is there a demand for that? Basically write something now as opposed to waiting, see what happens, or is it just the demands not necessarily there that we can actually just and see what happens?
Yeah, we have no idea because we don't have current standards. Um, what Opticos is saying is that in the years that they've been developing these codes. They've started with the main body with the depth. And then somebody comes to them and says, hey, wait a minute, I don't need my, I'm not up to my setbacks. I have extra uh, room in my lot coverage, so I want to do something more. So it's kind of after the fact. So that they have had to go back and retrofit some of the codes they've prepared. And to do that, they developed this wing approach. So it's their experience. It's certainly, I mean, Kenmore doesn't have any experience, so we don't know whether there will be demand or not.
Tracy.
Are current housing types in Kenmore being built routinely? And almost always up to their setbacks?
Um, I would say yes, as far as the side setback goes and and it's possible the front setback. The rear setback is a twenty foot rear setback, so that's a substantial setback. And and whether people are building to that, I'm not as familiar with, but I do know that for the side setbacks, yes, they probably are built to side setbacks.
Further comments? So what is the uh, pleasure of the planning commission with regard to this concept? And what Lori has suggested if we want to move forward? Tracy.
This is a question for us. So I I see that Opticos has outlined one potential benefit to having wings. What would a drawback to having wings be? Is there, are there any cons?
Well, I think the only con would be that the building would be bigger. And if, you know, if the commission is committed to the idea of those widths. You could have a bigger building. It would be more articulated, so by setting back the wing from the front facade and that kind of thing. Uh, it wouldn't, um. It wouldn't be as obvious. Um, but that could be a con. Then again, on on, if we're talking the smaller lots, there's not really room to do a wing. You maybe could do a wing in the back, but you certainly couldn't do it on the side because you would be right into the side setbacks. Um, so this is probably something for the larger lots. That might say, oh, you know, I could actually build more on this. And even though you've told me it can only be this wide and this deep in an effort to keep it in scale, I can do it in a sensitive way. That uh, would allow me to get more floor area without adversely impacting the neighborhood. So again, the con would be that the building would be bigger than uh, anticipated. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? I don't know.
And the reason isn't, so what is the real reason why we would want to do this other than just building bigger buildings?
I I think it is, it is a way to tackle those bigger lots. Uh, that are not using up all of their space. Staff is not recommending this. Uh, I I I want to be clear on that. I think it would add a level of complexity that we may not be ready for. But Opticos, they're the experts, really felt like this was an important concept. And again, it's for bigger lots where we've restricted the building width and depth. And and we may hear from folks who want to do this type of development that, well, I could get. I could do a much better design if you just let me have this, you know, bump out on part of my building. And and that's legitimate.
Okay, so then the next logical question, I'm sorry if I'm taking, I just want one more, I'll just take one more question. So does this help our ability to make duplexes?
I think on bigger lots, it probably helps the ability to do a duplex and triplex that just allows more square footage. Um, so that's one perspective. A con might be if you allow more square footage, the units are going to be bigger. And do we want smaller units that might be more attainable? I suppose that too could be a con, that if you allow bigger units, they're going to be more expensive. And that may not be the direction we were thinking we were heading with smaller living units.
Comments? Mario?
I I'm just thinking with the size, you know, it's the comment that you just made right now, Lori, I'm just thinking of uh, the experience of a colleague who after suffering, um.
Mario, we're having a really hard time hearing you.
Yeah, it it just, it makes me think though, of of the size of the beginning to thinking about affordability and the need for for housing and thinking of are are different, or their able bodiedness is different, who might need more space because of, let's say, the sample wheelchairs. Right, and I'm thinking if if this is a potential tool for duplexes and triplexes. I I'm thinking about like, is it something that could be used as a pro to create housing for folks who may need more space in order to maneuver within their house because of wheelchair, but thinking wheelchair access or other, other type of things of that type.
Nathan?
I I support that idea, but I think from what Lori was saying, because these buildings are already being built up to their setback lines on both sides and the front, uh, I don't know if there'd be a lot of instances where people who um, face disabilities would have that opportunity to build in a wing. If the the foundation of the structure is already reaching the setbacks and there's no room to. Um, I'm just trying to figure out if there might be an instance where that plays out because if, you know, that that's possible, then yes, I'm all for that. Um, but I I I don't know if the, if the building is already reaching its setbacks and doesn't allow for any future wings.
Mike?
The way I read this, and please argue with me if i- if you see it differently, is this allows for larger buildings on larger lots. Could be good or bad. If you're a developer, it's probably a very good thing. If you're looking for a larger duplex or a larger triplex. Uh, that's probably a good thing. If you're living in the neighborhood and we have rules about trying to maintain a standard and retain a a reasonable uh, feeling in the neighborhood in terms of density and we allow there to be a larger unit built, then you're you're compromising that. So I think there's a lot to be considered in here, and I'm not sure we're at the point to have enough experience to be able to do that. So seeing as we've looked at the idea of having an incremental approach, this seems to be something we would want to look at over time and and make adjustments as we learn, I mean, have more information.
Great comment. Um, further, okay, Tracy?
A- a- and I I think too, getting into some of the com- the complexities about it and what we do know and what we don't know, I feel like it 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 feels really important for us to remind ourselves about what our goals are, why we're considering missing middle housing types and make sure that any decision about wings is aligned with those goals. Right now, it feels like a little, did we were a little detached from from that. Um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not feeling like we have enough information to make a decision. I don't, I don't feel like I have enough information to make a decision.
Nathan, I see your hand.
Uh, I don't know. To me, in my gut, it feels almost like a loophole to get around the standards and kind of um, borders that we put on the concept right now. It's just a way to get around these max and maximums that we've put in place for specific reasons. Um, and I don't know if that's really fair or what we're trying to achieve here. Um, we set standards for a reason, and if we don't want to follow those standards, then let's get rid of the standards, but I'm not in favor of that. That's, I'm just joking here, but I I don't know how that I'd feel particularly in favor of wings because we have those standards.
Okay, and then clarify, so Lori, the position of the staff is they're both not recommending this and not taking a long term position at this point, correct?
Right, I I think uh, probably Commissioner Vanderlin most clearly articulated our issues with it. Uh, it, we've just set standards in place. Now we seem to be allowing larger units than we anticipated when the goal was to make uh, new structures compatible with existing uh, uh, more traditional homes in our residential areas. And uh, when we were looking perhaps to smaller units as a way to provide more attainable housing. I'm not saying affordable, I'm saying more attainable. Um, so I think it in some ways subverts uh, our original goal. I see the issue and certainly if in the future it was an issue that was preventing us from getting uh, triplex development perhaps. Most importantly, then maybe it would be worth revisiting, but I guess I have some of the same reservations.
Well, if I may summarize it based on what I've heard and staff recommendations is that it appears that the commission wishes to pass on this proposal at this time. With the um, understanding is that sometime sometime in the future, we may bring it back up, but not in this round. Is that summarize things? Is everyone happy with that?
Yay.
Okay, so we will not, so what what that means also is that that this will not be part of or uh, other than what's in the minutes for this meeting, this will not be mentioned or be brought to public hearing. Okay, oh, you wanted to talk?
I did. So I'll just make one more proposal. And I take it or leave it. Your direction was very clear, but we could add the concept as a potential implementation measure to the comprehensive plan language. We have, we were saying it's incremental. We don't have to do anything. But if you really were concerned that this concept is, has some merit and that it might not uh, come back in any way. We could memorialize that in an implementation measure in the housing element where we talk about things we're going to look at at the future.
Comments from the commission? About Lori's suggestion? Mike?
Just because it's worthy of commenting whenever Lori makes a suggestion. Uh, and it's a good one, I understand it. Uh, but I don't feel a a warm need for this, and I would think that if there was public interest in this. It would, it would come up through the public and we would have that on an agenda in the future, but I I don't think we need to clutter this up anymore than it already is.
Okay, so I summarized a position for the commission, which is this is sort of a dead issue to the, and and not, and but uh, for something in the future that we might look at. And that's the real short, one sentence version. Um, if there's no objection to that and what I had said before, then we will move on with that as our decision. Lori, you've got it?
Right, so we're not going to do anything different. Well, this, we will remain silent on the topic of wings.
That's right, except what's in the minutes from this meeting.
Correct.
Wonderful. Okay, so now we're back to, do we need to talk about four A or four B?
So I wanted to make a couple of comments. Uh, the information I think was um self-explanatory, but I did want to report back now that I've lost my place here. And say that um, Debbie took uh, the missing middle housing concept to the D E I task force on April seventh for their reaction and their sort of initial uh, input. And uh, so the task force agreed that this step is an important first step. I think they were supportive of doing this, uh, but they had three things that they wanted to say. Uh, first was they, uh, and and Debbie described, you know, that this is an incremental approach, that there are implementation measures that talk about doing things in the future. Uh, they wished that there were more housing types than just duplexes and triplexes being considered. They wish that the area where these uses were allowed was larger and farther away from corridors, actually. And they wish that things could happen more quickly, that the implementation was not perhaps into, in well into the future, but could happen more quickly. So I am passing along those comments uh, that she relayed to me. Um, and then again, the PowerPoint that she presented is part of attachment four, as is a memo she prepared last year on how to remove discriminatory covenant. Um, from a deed, and then there is some additional background information that I thought you might find useful.
Okay, so you had three items that the task force quickly had input on. Would you just, uh, is that somewhere in a memo? Somewhere, those three items that you just
No, because uh, that uh, that meeting happened prior to the time that I was able to put it into your memo.
That's fine.
So it should appear in, it definitely should appear in the minutes, for sure.
Okay, so would you, for my, I was
Yeah, would you like me to
This, just those three points, if you
Right.
Restate them, please.
Okay, the three points were that uh, the D E I task force uh, was hoping that all this is a good first step, that other housing types. Uh, and they particularly mentioned small lots or small houses on small lots and cottage housing. They were hoping that other housing types could be considered. They hoped that the area within which missing middle housing types were being allowed could be expanded, and they referenced that in particular because uh, of an interest in allowing those types of uses farther away from transportation corridors. And the last thing was that they were hoping that um, these changes to allow more missing middle housing could occur more rapidly.
Comments from the commission?
Yeah. Thank you so much, Lori. Um, I appreciate you uh, attaching
Come on in.
Presentation uh, to the D I task force, and it was actually really complimentary and appreciated. I did have a chance to view the conversation um, that took place um, for the D I task force, and I have to say that their questions and their thoughts were, I think, aligned to a a number of the conversations that at least we had since I joined the planning commission. Um, I I do um, know that in hearing this conversation, there, one of the reasons why um, they're really wanting to see this middle housing expand beyond transit corridors is is really the idea of not kind of perpetuating a a redlining of source of where you have more attainable housing in these areas where you have more traffic, you know, more um, I guess, kind of those types of of environmental factors. Um, I do also appreciate the comment that they shared about the city doing more outreach to let residents know um, how they can strike racial covenants uh, from their property documents. Um, and I know that's something that I do want to kind of bring back and report to, to my fellow commissioners here of Um, and I know that's something that I do wanna kind of bring back and report to, to my fellow commissioners here of, you know, how we can, you know, support that, uh, that idea, but it also makes me think of the conversation we had last time of, of knowing how uh, I think how sometimes methods or policies are used to discriminate, how it could be very explosive, it's very different than it was before, it's really plain in their face. And how things um, can be very more, uh, more suppressive. And thinking about how as a city, we can further do outreach and connect folks to, if they have concern about being discriminated, how they can then connect to the different bodies that are necessary to pursue any type of investigation or support um, with regards to any situation that they may find. Those are just a few comments and thoughts, really did appreciate the conversation that was had and Debbie's uh, presentation with the DEI task force. And I think it, it was very, it's, it's very similarly aligned conversations we had with this guy.
Go ahead, Tracy.
So Lori or Marielle, since you saw the meeting, can, can you say anything more about that third point about wishing that the implementation would happen more rapidly? And, and what are things that we might be able to do to facilitate that? But I'm not, I'm just not sure what that means exactly, I mean, I know it means faster, but I, beyond that, what does that mean?
I, I think that the, you know, it was clear uh, in front of the task force that the planning commission is recommending an incremental approach. And I think that they were hoping that the future steps in this incremental approach would ha- would happen more quickly uh, than maybe anticipated. And that's purely a workload issue. Um, so each year, right, we have a docket that the city council approves. And unfortunately, at this point, the docket is consumed by the comprehensive plan update. So to do additional zoning code amendments is probably something that unless the city council directs us differently, is something that won't happen for a while, and I think they were wishing that we could do the whole package right now altogether. Um, but that would mean changing the planning commission's recommendation.
Uh, so they were hoping for, if we were going to take an incremental approach to plan out the next steps right now?
Right, and, and more quickly than perhaps is envisioned, given that the docket over the next several years until 2024 is dominated by other, uh, by transportation, by climate change, uh, by economic development, by downtown development, all the different components of the comprehensive plan that we have yet to address to meet our uh, state deadline.
Okay, s- so was there desire for it to move more rapidly? Is, that, that seems also to be reflected in their wish maybe for it to be expanded more broadly, that would also allow this to be implemented more rapidly, is that right? Am I understanding right? I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm, I know what they're saying, yes, that, that's right, okay.
Now, when we're due, I just have a question for Lori. When we get to the point where we're doing the complete um, comprehensive plan update, there's a point in time where we have to do the whole thing and pass it back to the council, correct?
No.
Okay, so I'm, I'm getting a little confused on that.
Yeah, so some jurisdictions take that approach. They start and they uh, they redo the whole thing in the space of a year or two. Kenmore has never taken that approach. Kenmore that updates things regularly, and then as we get close to the deadline, then it's like, okay, now we really are gonna focus on these for the next couple of years. So that's why, for example, we've already done the natural environment element, we did the shoreline element, we did the parks recreation and open space element. So we've been doing pieces of it as we go along. This year, this, last year and this is a really big section because the other, like, transportation depends totally on the land use and housing element. So now we're into that crunch time, we have until 2024, and so land use, housing, transportation, and then the remaining elements that we don't anticipate a lot of significant changes to. But there will not be a point where the whole document will be revisited and provided to the city council. It's adopted piece by piece over a series of years. And then once it's adopted, then we have time to pick up other, other tasks and other pieces and other work programs, we did
Other elements of the comprehensive plan.
Or zoning, zoning uh, code changes, we did communication facilities, we did marijuana businesses, we did, uh, we looked at commercial zoning along SR five-two-two, so we pick up other significant zoning changes that need to be revisited.
Absolutely, so, but the bottom line is, is that once we do what we're doing, we're not gonna be going back to revisiting this for a while, that's the bottom line.
That, that's the desire. And I don't even wanna bring this up because this is really bad timing, but the state is, is not in sync with us necessarily. And so the state has, in this last session, has set out some things that they want the housing element to do. And they are not gonna give us guidance on how to do that until the end of the year into next. So it's possible that we're going to have to open up the housing element again when we think we're finished with it to adjust it if we have to meet their requirements. We don't think that's gonna be a major change because we really tried to be proactive, but
Those are external factors that are out of our control.
Right.
Okay, so, but that's not the intent of what we're here tonight doing. So the point is, is that what we do tonight, you know, we've heard what the task force would like us to look at. So it's up to the commissioners to let, you know, what, what y'all think. Nathan?
Yeah, I think uh, from what Lori's saying, it's really hard to change our workload. Our, we don't set our own docket, it's the city council. We can send, you know, uh, maybe a, a statement or um, the, an opinion of the commission that we hope to see this sooner rather than later, so we can address it again. But uh, again, at the end of the day, we serve at the behest of the, the council, and so it's, we, we do what they put in front of us, and I think the plan that we have right now, uh, it was made with good intentions and sound analysis, and I, I think we should be, that, that there's a lot of um, a lot of good things that back up the decisions that we made. Um, and I think a lot of us would like to see that incremental approach maybe um, go faster. I, I mean, I, I don't wanna speak on behalf of everyone, but I think that that would be um, I, I, I don't wanna say that I disagree with the, the DEI task force on that. But again, it's, it's up to the council on what we're presented with, and so I think that's kind of a little bit out of our hands at that point.
I see your hand, Tracy.
Thank you, Dwight, did, did not we have a recommendation for smaller houses on smaller lots? I thought we did include that, my misremembering.
Implementation measure. Uh, to, something to look at.
Something to look at, okay, so we didn't make a recommendation, we recommended to look at it. Okay, and I, that's how I remember the cottage housing, which maybe says something about my thinking about them. Interesting for myself to note for myself. Okay, um, so it feels like we, so we, we are, I, I understand the, the docket issues and the workload and the, the staff issues, and at the same time, it seems like we've, so we've given our preliminary recommendations, this is going to public hearing, and then we, we will give our final recommendations on this issue to council. So there is still time for us to discuss and come to perhaps a di- slightly different conclusions than we have come to, given this new information, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Um, okay, yeah.
Well, y- you muted yourself on that last set.
Nathan has his hand up, so I was just gonna stop talking so Nathan could talk.
Well, are you completed, Tracy?
It feels to me like, I think that we were incredibly thoughtful in our conversations about missing middle housing types and how we were going to proceed. I do think however, that for myself anyway, I feel like there were some areas of some issues related to missing middle housing that I don't think we really fully explored, and I feel like the racial legacy of single-family zoning was one of those for me. And I, I, and I think that's what the DEI task force is kind of pointing out. Um, a- and so I, I feel like there perhaps for me is still more to explore there, and if we still have time, it makes sense to me to, to, to do it. You know, whether or not we're gonna come to any different conclusions, I don't know. That's
Thank you, Nathan.
Lori, would the recent legislation in the state potentially open this conversation back up? Or is that something completely different when it comes to the housing element?
Um, it, the, the housing element uh, legislation really has to do with assigning uh, responsibility for numbers of affordable housing units at different income levels. So it would take our targets and uh, the goal is to assign each jurisdiction a number at how many thirty percent AMI, how many sixty percent AMI units do we need? And then we're supposed to express measures that we will use to accommodate that. It doesn't necessarily mean land use, I don't think land use can accomplish some of these things. Uh, but it doesn't directly address missing middle housing.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had another question really quickly, if I can remember it. Oh goodness, I had both, I, I didn't wanna cut Tracy off there, I'm sorry that you felt you needed to, to stop.
Don't worry about it.
Give me one moment, let, while I try and think about that.
Well, while you're giving, um, we're gonna give you a moment, and Mike has his finger up.
Yes, Nathan and I will cover for each, each other whenever we do. Uh, I also listened in on the DEI task force, and it was a very interesting discussion. The first part I thought was really interesting is in like, they're got a meeting about the same length as ours, and about the first half hour, they tried to cover everything really, and we saw the same, a lot of the same questions and concerns that we spent months look, looking at. And I think what I saw toward the middle of the discussion was some growing frustration among the members of the DI task force. Part of it, I think, came out of there was a, a general confusion over the idea of what missing middle could really accomplish in terms of affordability. And Debbie did a really good job of trying, I think, to have, bring them to the point where they understood that missing middle wasn't a solution for affordable housing. And from then on, I saw the conversation begin to change. And what you could read, what in, what little was said, but more in people's uh, non-verbal communication was, so what is that solution? How do we get to affordable housing? And wanting to tackle that, and that's not on our agenda. Uh, we could expand a missing middle uh, throughout King County, and you're still not gonna scratch the affordable. And you're going to, who knows what the unintended consequences of that would be? I mean, that's what we spent months considering and coming up with it, with, with the incremental approach that we've had, we've come to. Which basically said, we don't know, let's, let's watch and see how this matures over time, and where the economy really takes us over time. And where personal preference takes us over time. And so I, I still support our incremental approach, and I'm very sympathetic to the DEI task force, I think they're focused on the right things. Missing middle just isn't the tool, hopefully we'll get eventually to the point where we have a discussion of what would the tools be that Kenmore would have to address truly affordable housing. Uh, I'm not sure that's within the city's capability. Uh, it may take a wider solution than that, but it's gonna certainly take more than one meeting or a few hours of discussion to, to get to that, so.
Right, any further comments? Back to Nathan.
I agree with Mike. Um, I think from the first day when we started talking about missing middle, this wasn't a topic, um, where there was no focus on affordable housing, although we were trying to make it more affordable. Um, but it was about expanding the type of housing and not really the um, expanding homeownership and those who are included in homeownership. And so I don't think this is the tool to maybe achieve what we want it to, or that the DEI task force wants us to. And I think the incremental approach that we're taking um, is probably the best solution we have or can take in front of us at this moment, it's not the best, I mean, it's not like the most ideal that we all want, but it's the best that we can take at this moment based on the options that we have. And so I, I think as Mike pointed out, you know, when we, if we can, and when we can, address the topic of affordable housing, that's a whole different ballgame. And then we're gonna be getting into uh, addressing these, these issues that I think we all care so deeply about. But as for missing middle, I think what we have right now is the best that we can get to. Um, but the second point is, again, we're having a public hearing on this, so the public will tell us their opinions on this. And if we need to, we can come back and scrap this whole thing. So I think that'll be the real test in a couple of weeks, I hope that we don't have to scrap the whole thing. But if, if the true sentiments of this, the residents of Kenmore, then we'll know and we can, we can work from there. Um, but I think as we have it, you know, we, we've gotten to a good point with um, good support, ex- excellent support from our city staff, um, and understanding the com- complicated nature of this topic and of the other um, things we'd like to address as well.
Okay, so to move the meeting along, is there, uh, everyone's pretty much in um, an okay state of mind with what Mike and Nathan spoke to? If there's nothing else to be said about that, then may I ask um, the minute taker to briefly and eloquently summarize the uh, positions that Mike and Nathan talked about? And so that uh, everyone knows that we can, did uh, talked about it, we considered it, and that uh, that's where we're at.
Uh, yeah, I'm, so the way I'm doing my minutes is I have my notes here, discussion on PC docket and the timing. And so when I go back and watch the minutes, that's when I get my exact words down. So if there's something specifically they'd like to point out, I, I will take that now.
So how about this, uh, go ahead and, uh, I, we, we have to trust our minute taker. If you want to, um, I certainly, without objection from the commission, have no problem with if you were to send uh, that paragraph that you want to, to write and send it to Mike and Nathan and make sure that they're okay.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, is there any objection with the commission on that? Hearing, oh, Tracy.
I don't have objection, I, 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 I'm not arguing necessarily against the approach we've taken so much as I do personally feel like there is, like, single-family zoning has historical roots in racial exclusion. And I don't personally feel like we have fully wrestled with that. Like, we've wrestled with a lot of things about single-family zoning and missing middle housing, and we've done a very good job a, a, about approaching it, but I guess for me, it feels like it, uh, there's still, it's an open question for me, like, can we maintain that tool of single-family zoning? And have it not be racially excluding? Like, it, it, can, can we have an incremental approach and, and, and not, you, you know, I, I guess, and it's a larger question that we may, we, it may not be appropriate to And it's a larger question that we may, we, it may not be appropriate to address it on a planning commission. But I still feel like since we're making decisions based on what's done before and what we're gonna do going forward, it's, it does feel, it's something I've been wrestling with. And I do feel compelled to say it out loud. Even if I don't change my, you know, the overall recommendation, even if I go along with this incremental approach.
But the point that you're making is that this is your, we'll call it your issue, just to make it easy, is an element which should be taken as a part of that paragraph that, that Rita's going to write about what we're thinking about. With the Mike and Nathan part, would, would you be okay with that?
If Rita wrote something about what I just said.
Said and put that in with Nathan and Mike that.
That would be fine.
Okay. Cause I, I do think it needs, we, we need to go on the record. You know, part of what minutes are for is to show legislative intent and how we came to the decision that we made. And those minutes are actually, and how we do our voting and do that stuff is actually more important than you might think. And because we're part of the sausage making. And then they, they cook the sausage up at the city council. So we, we make the sausage and sometimes we have to put a little liner around it explaining, well, this spice is not in the sausage and we, we think that we need to do some more work on on the chorizo or whatever it is. So Marielle.
Besides making me hungry right now, so I haven't had dinner yet. I, I do wanna rip a little bit off of what Tracy was sharing, because I think that this quiet really is about no matter how logical and sound the decision is, is that there are still unintended consequences. And by going thoughtfully, right, through the process, what is the unintended consequence? Of housing potentially still, we're still creating a, a system or a process that unintentionally will exceed, right? Because we do have this historical context that we are living within and that we are trying to essentially reform, right? And how can we do that if we're making decisions and making recommendations to city council, right? How can we, how can we further align our thoughtfulness with making sure that we're mitigating unintended consequences? I know that's something that I, I'm, I rest with myself as well. But how can we make sure that we are not unintentionally repeating mistakes that are going to further marginalize individuals and communities from calling Kenmore home?
Thank you. Further comments? On items, Tracy?
Can I, I mean, maybe just to finish up off my own conflicted feelings and, and, and explain perhaps why I haven't vehemently objected to uh, the incremental approaches, because I do feel like the other factors that we have been talking about, like infrastructure and such do matter. And you know, if, if we were living in a vacuum and I could simply undo the harms of single family zoning, I would say, yeah, like, we shouldn't have it anymore. Let's undo that harm. But we don't live in a vacuum, you know, we're living in the context of a million other factors and having to make decisions with those million other factors in mind. And those are real. Like, I think we do have real concerns about, you know. If you think about public works and our infrastructure is how we care for each other. I mean, that, that's, I think, true. And so we have to think about, like, do we have that infrastructure in place to really care for the people who are going to be living in places where we might be building new homes? So that, that's a very real thing too. Which I guess I'm just bringing up because from, I'm complicating it for myself and for us, because I think it is complicated. And perhaps that, that does tie together my, my thoughts. So just for the record, Rita, you, you have that.
Nathan?
I'm on the exact same page as Tracy. Those are my thoughts that I've been having this entire time too. Is I feel like it would almost be more of an injustice to seclude or isolate pockets of missing middle away from infrastructure. Then we're doing an even greater disservice to, to the people and the homeowners in those positions. And I, I think balancing that, the access to infrastructure and access to city services with its integration in single family neighborhoods, because it's only integrated in single family neighborhoods. I think is trying to accomplish as many goals to serve as many residents who use missing middle housing as we can, while also at the same time balancing the other priorities that we have, such as environmental considerations and not wanting to allow that to encroach too too excessively into these critical areas that we have. And I, I, again, like Tracy was saying, you know, it's there's, the, the structure that we have is the one that we have. And we're trying to do the best that we can without doing without intending to do harm where we can. And so that's, I, I think that it's, it's not the most ideal option, this incremental approach, but I think it's, we're trying to do it in the way that serves these residents best. Again, like Mike and I were saying earlier, I think when we start to talk about affordable housing, that's when we can really get into this topic and address it more holistically and more robustly. But for missing middle, it's, it's, we're, we're doing what we can with what we have. And it's not the most ideal tool in order to address this, this topic. Which is unfortunate, but that's just what we have in front of us right now.
Any further comments? All right, so good luck Rita with the minutes. And feel free to send them not only to Nathan and Mike, but Tracy, Marielle too.
You got it.
Okay, so. All right. Okay. So we're at, so we talked about the DEI. And now, and we touched briefly, there's a whole memo. Go ahead, Nathan.
But Tracy had her hand up, so.
I didn't see it down there.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Nathan. I'm just wondering if, if, for the sake of providing information for our community members so that they can fully engage in this complicated conversation with us. If we can, can, Lori, can we point them toward the DEI Task Force meeting that took place on this? As part of what we're bringing to our, to them at, on May seventeenth, or is that not?
I, I guess I'm not quite quite sure what you're asking.
Yeah, we're making a recommendation about this and we have been talking about DEI concerns. Can we say can we point the public toward that DEI meeting? I'm gonna actually go back and watch it myself, but can we just?
Of course, we can, we can always send them to the DEI meeting, but I don't think it's gonna help them understand the conversation that you're having. They would then only hear the, the perspective of the DEI Task Force and not the more
You don't.
complicated conversation that, that Planning Commission just had.
Okay, that, that came about, yeah, they wouldn't get our complicated conversation just by reading our recommendations. Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying. That's fair.
Complicated, so.
Very complicated.
Very complicated. Okay, so I'm trying to move unless there's further discussion on that point. And I think Rita's got her marching orders, so we're going to make sure there's just a memo on removal of racially restrictive covenants, and that's an explanation of some information that we requested from Lori. I, unless there's a comment, I think that all that is for information and all of us should have read it. Unless Lori has something that she feels that it's necessary to impart to us, that's not written. We should move to staff memo two. And, and this has to do with the zoning map, so. Lori, you're.
So this, I hope will be a brief and easy conversation. So the zoning map is the regulatory map that implements the zoning codes that are developed by zoning district for the community. And so the map is supposed to reflect the map you've already seen and endorsed, the comprehensive plan land use map. So the zoning map has three major minor changes. The first is that change to the properties on Northeast Two Hundred and Second Street to the new public semi-public zoning to allow the Public Works facility to apply for construction there. So you endorsed that as part of the comprehensive plan land use map, and now we're changing the zoning to match that. There are also a couple of park designations, new property that the city owns or that in the case of St. Edward State Park, the state owns. So those now have been changed to parks zoning. And then the third change is the change on Seventy Third Avenue Northeast. It's an area of R twelve medium density zoning that in the current zoning map extended quite a ways towards Swamp Creek. Now that development has been built. And the easternmost portions of a couple of parcels are under permanent environmental sensitive, environmentally sensitive areas tracks. So we have proposed rezoning those to R one, which again is our protective lowest density zoning. So those are the changes. And if you have questions, I'm ready.
So the changes are on attachment?
I believe it's the first attachment, that's the new map, and the second attachment is the existing map.
Okay, just wanna be clear for the record. Comments on the items for attachment one, the zoning map? Hearing on the zoning map one, we'll go to public hearing. All right, so now we're gonna go to zoning map number two.
No, that is the existing zoning map and was only provided for reference.
No, but the, oh, the missile, missing middle proposal was back and I have that printed out. So you have a map there and it's just, I, I got a little confused with all the maps, so. That. Have we already approved the purple lines on that to go to public hearing?
Correct. So, so the way this works is that the R six zoning district still remains the R six zoning district on the zoning map. But there's the new section in the R six zoning standards that talks about duplexes and triplexes. And associated with that is a figure that would go into the municipal code that shows the areas where duplexes and triplexes could be considered. And that area matches the medium density residential designation on the comprehensive plan land use map. So the three of them work together, but the only place in the zoning map where you could do duplexes and triplexes is shown on that figure in the R six zoning district.
Right, and that is the slide, missing middle housing proposal. I don't know what this, it's twelve.
It was in the presentation that Debbie gave. It's a different map. It's a black and white map with a single outline. And that was in your packet last week.
Right.
But it's the same map.
It's the same map, only this is colored. Okay, so I just.
We put black and white in the municipal code. Save printing costs.
So actually going to hearing will be two sort of maps. One is the missing middle map that you just discussed. And the other is the first map which you talked about the other little correction, shall we say?
Uh, the comprehensive plan land use map and the zoning map. All three of those maps will be part of the hearing.
Right. The incremental approach is the missing middle housing proposal, though, correct? Okay, I just, that's, I guess where I wanted to be clear about, that's the key missing middle, the, the issues of, of incremental steps. Okay. If so are there any further comments or anyone want to take, bring up anything that's going to the public hearing? Otherwise, we are set for the public hearing, correct, Lori?
Right, and so I wanted to talk a little bit about how the public hearing will happen. I wanted to let you know what we're doing sort of behind the scenes to get ready for the public hearing. I think it'll take about five minutes, if you don't mind. Okay, so we are conducting a series of public outreach efforts this month until May seventeenth. A postcard is going out probably on Monday to every business and residence in the city. Talking about the public hearing, providing the Zoom link, inviting people to attend and steering them to two different webpages. One is our comprehensive plan update webpage, which includes all of the amendments you've discussed, along with a summary of those amendments. And then also the missing middle housing webpage that includes the map showing where it could potentially be permitted, showing the standards. And including all of these code sections that you have been discussing. There's also an FAQ about missing middle housing and a wealth of information and other links for the community to learn more about missing middle housing. So that's one thing, the webpages and the postcard. On May second or May third, the quarterly newsletter comes out and there will be an article in that. That also goes to all households in Kenmore that talks about the public hearing and invites residents to attend. We are working with PRR Inc., that was our consultant that helped us last summer with the survey and community outreach and the public participation plan to set up a pre-hearing meeting for those using Spanish. And we have really been trying to find a contact to help us with that, so we're continuing, oh. Sorry, I'm distracted. We are continuing to find opportunities and whether we'll be able to set up a meeting or whether we're going to be in the position of needing to deliver materials to local Mexican shops or to communities where we know a lot of those who use Spanish live. We have a summary of the amendments in Spanish and also a Spanish PowerPoint, all ready to go if we can make the contacts and we've been in touch with the DEI Task Force. We've been in touch with a couple of churches that host services in Spanish. We've been in touch with the North Shore School District. We're still working to make that happen, but I want you to know, we're really making an effort here. To connect. And we will have two interpreters at the public hearing, Spanish interpreters. And the, the conduct of that hearing, for those of you who haven't participated in a public hearing would typically be that Chair Thompson would open the public hearing. Usually staff gives an overview of the amendments, try to keep it brief. And then, pardon?
Goodness, brief. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get a sign up.
Close it down. Anyway, and then folks will be able to, to give their comments. It's a three-minute comment limit. After that, then Chair Thompson would close the hearing and then we anticipate your deliberations beginning on June seventh at your next meeting. your deliberations beginning on June seventh at your next meeting. So that is what I wanted to report. Um, I, I, there's one comment that I wanted to make. One commissioner had asked that we send specific mailings to um properties in the countywide growth center. And because the zoning, because none of the standards are changing, the countywide growth center designation is really a policy designation, we've included that information in the summary, but we're not intending to do a specific to pay for a specific mailing to those property owners. We are doing a specific mailing to those within a thousand feet of the proposed public works facility site. And that site actually will be posted with a public notice board, because that's a site-specific change that involves the rezone for that project. So there you have it. It was probably more than five minutes, but.
Alright. Um, for those of you who may have not done this kind of thing before, there's two comments that I might have. One is um I guess it really is your opportunity, if you really want to, ask a clarifying question to someone who is speaking. But I would like to remind the commissioners that is, this is not the time to debate or not the time to take on um what's right or wrong or opinions related to what's being uh commented and are the feedback from the public. But I know that occasionally there might be some misunderstanding of what they might have meant or something, so uh I will uh if there's a question that you ask, I will remind the uh respondent that they have one minute to respond to that question, so that it, this does not get out of hand. But I do, you do have the right to ask a limited question, and I, as chair will ask you and I will enforce that we are not there to debate our public. We're there to take their information and then use it as best as we can. Is there any comments about what I just said? Is that okay with y'all? I am your chair. I'm not, you know, so if you wanna beat on me, this is your opportunity. Alright, so um, you know, and the deal is, is that we could have hardly anybody show up. Or we could have quote a roomful, and so, you know, the point is, is we need to move it along and take notes and Rita's such a great note taker that she'll have this all done by individuals. So uh Lori is suggesting that we do not need a meeting on May third. Is there any commissioners that have the need for us to meet on May third? Am I uh summarizing correctly? Lori, you have no need for us on May third.
No, I, I might just make, wh- when you're finished with your conversation, I, I'd like to just discuss the interpretation very briefly at the public hearing.
Oh.
Since we won't meet before then.
Okay, so um I'll accept a motion to cancel the May third meeting.
So moved.
So moved, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, aye. It's uh the meeting on May third is canceled by unanimous consent and recommendation of the staff. So Lori, it's your last shot at us.
Okay, alright. Um, so as I mentioned, we're going to have two Spanish interpreters at the public hearing. And the way we have arranged it to date is that if someone wants to speak to the commission who uses Spanish, uh they would make their comments, and then the uh interpreter would make those comments to you. Um, so it'll slow things down a little bit, and we just have to acknowledge that their three minutes is maybe gonna take a little longer because someone is also going to have to relay that to you. We are investigating whether it's possible to do uh simultaneous translation through Zoom. This is the best kind of interpretation, where the interpreter is basically communicating the whole meeting to those who use Spanish at the same time, even though we can't hear it. That would be a brand-new technology for the city to use, and I don't know that we'll be in a position to make that happen. But I wanted to alert you to that in case we can make it happen, in which case you would see the interpreter on the screen all the time uh uh interpreting whatever is being said. And you would see the mouth move, you wouldn't hear them, but those who dial into a specific channel to use Spanish would hear the whole meeting in Spanish. So I don't know that we'll get there, but uh we're doing our best. And otherwise, it will be the uh interpretation of the individual comments. The interpreter, interpreters are only there until nine thirty, so at nine o'clock, it may be that we would need to make an announcement that those who use Spanish uh should speak in the next half an hour because we only have interpretation until nine thirty, so.
Absolutely. So um the interpreters are certified interpreters.
They are.
And have they been given instructions that they are to interpret directly, that they're not to interpret the interpretation?
Yes, correct. They are both certified court interpreters. They, we have worked with them. Uh, we worked with them several years ago on the manufactured housing communities project. Um, they have done translation for us. I'm very confident in their abilities. They've handled large uh public meetings.
That's great. I, I, in my business, I deal with interpreters and I certainly do not appreciate interpreters taking on their own viewpoints, thinking that they know what the uh Latino individual is saying or means to say. I, we want a um direct interpretation. If we're unclear, then we have the ability to ask. Nathan, you're first, and then Marielle.
Uh, this brought up a good point. Lori, I know Zoom has a feature for live audio transcripts. Will that be a service available at the same time as well for those who might have um hearing disabilities?
Um, we haven't, we haven't talked about that. I certainly think that we could check into that. Um, our internal technical ability is somewhat limited. Um, but uh I will, I will definitely uh check into that, so it would be uh likes. Oh, I think we might have used that for the open house last fall. I can't quite remember if we had our technical people.
We, we did Lori.
Okay, alright, so maybe Rita, it's familiar with that, but uh that is certainly something we can check into.
First of all, I just wanna thank you so much Lori for everything that you and staff are doing to do outreach and support and to be able to provide access to this conversation and, and like we just said, we're the conversion. I just, I just wanna first of all say, I very much appreciate that. I think secondly, to Nathan's point, um Zoom does have the ability to do live transcript. But if you are working with a neutral location service, my recommendation would be just because of, of, of of my own usage of the live trans- transcript, that you can assign the interpreter to type it in, and that's gonna be much more accurate than you can use the AI capability of Zoom. Because sometimes it will misinterpret what you're saying, instead of saying, if you say the word button, it'll say, I don't know, banana, or whatever. It, it needs its years, so we have the opportunity to get a live person. And then uh I know that Zoom just had, has just added the feature for that live in person like um interpretation. I'm not quite sure how it works. Well, I haven't had a chance to, to use it myself, but if you need to connect with someone who has had some experience in it, connect with a colleague who does, uh who does uh work on our translation and interpretation for the, the work that we do.
Yeah, thank you. Both, both of our interpreters have done this work over Zoom, and uh we're also going to be talking with PRR Inc., our consultant from last year, who helped us uh set up the um housing uh forum, who has experience with this. So fingers crossed, we're advancing, and I, I can also mention that the postcard itself, you know, it's not in um Mandarin or Russian, but there is a block that talks about if you need uh language help in other languages, a call in, in the city has um uh language line interpretation services. It wouldn't be available at the hearing, but someone could make comments uh before or after.
It is true that we will be taking up these matters at the following meeting after the public hearing, correct?
Yeah, June seventh.
Alright, um may I request that um the packet that's gonna be posted, if you could give Mike and I an opportunity to preview the packet to make sure that you know, we, from our understanding of what's gonna go on, that um it's all there and, you know, we're and not to say that, I think that would be a good thing, just uh for us to take a quick look at it.
So this is the public hearing packet for the seventeenth, or the packet for the June seventh meeting?
No, the seventh, for the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Right, so and then may I ask that either you call us on our on our personal phone and leave a message that it's on the city uh on our city email, or send us uh an email on our personal email saying it's writ, it's sitting on your Kenmore City email, because I, at least for me, I have too many emails, and it's hard for me to keep up with with it all. I'm, I'm sorry, but um I, and I know it's time-sensitive, so uh if Mike doesn't mind, I, that's what I'd like staff to do, okay? Alright, is there any further uh comments for the good of the order? I show it's nine oh four. I think we did really good. We got a lot done. And not only that, we don't have to do the next meeting, so we have a, a week off. That's, that's great. And um and Lori, uh feel free to communicate with any member of the commission if there's uh questions related to what was said tonight. You're welcome to do that. We really appreciate you and Debbie's work on getting this together for us. I mean, it's, we couldn't have gotten done by nine o'clock and, and canceled next meeting. If you folks had not done a very good job of, of organizing and uh summarizing and keeping us in line. So thank you very much, and Rita, thank you for all your minutes and your detailed work and keeping our Zoom zooming all night long. Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good. I was just making sure she's still there. Okay, folks, see you in four weeks then for a public hearing on Zoom with an interpreter and Lori and everything else. So if you have any questions, feel free to give me a buzz. Um, I'm around um and uh just uh it's great. So the meeting is adjourned at nine oh five. Thank you.
Night all.
Night.
Everybody.
Bye. Good night.